Call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kittle Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you everyone for being here. Let's take a moment and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would, just join me for a moment of silence. All right, thank you all for being here. Taking my glasses on and off, so I don't steam up that bit. Running to get here. Board, you have an agenda before you. You got it in your packet last week. We are looking to approve the agenda.
There, I'm moving. We approved the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion from Mr. Gray and a second from Mr. Windley. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I keep still hot up with like, do I have to roll call now? Too long on Zoom. That was unanimous for anyone who's listening elsewhere. All right, next item is public comment, and I see that we have someone who has signed up here. I believe it says Aiden Tobiar?
Tobias.
Tobias, okay, sorry, I couldn't quite make out that last letter. And I have a couple little things I have to say before you start, and it's that we set this time aside for public comment. It's an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the board on any topic of their choosing. We do ask that if you come to the podium to please identify yourself by name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking for an individual, five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of a group. You have written remarks. If we have some of them leave, they will come to the clerk, and when you're finished, they can be included in the meeting record. We have a sign up sheet, which you did, and we're ready to go.
Hi, I'm meeting Tobias, and I am from West Ocean Acres Drive, and there are speeders all up and down the road, and I am concerned about what the kids all up and down the road. And so I think there should be more stop signs up and down West Ocean Acres Drive if so speeders slow down and for the safety of the kids and the speeders' lives.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comment.
Thanks for being long to get up there.
And thanks for getting up there. We don't get too many folks given the times. We appreciate you taking the time to come out here. We'll definitely be taking that into consideration. And I think, did we have one to read as well?
I was just up there for moral support.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Oh, do Bethel land this?
There's two.
There's two. I should, I should read one. Okay. I have the rest here. Dear Commissioners, there's a roadwork sign at the entrance to the Admirals 3 Ocean Side. Warning of shoulder work ahead. There's a photo. This sign is very large and blocks our ability to see traffic on the left as we exit our lot. There are eight cottages moving in and out of the lot. It's a dangerous situation as we cannot see traffic or bicycles on the approach. I request that the sign be moved so that the view is no longer obstructed when cars exit our lot. All right, that's good. The next item of public comment is from Fay Lewis. It's entitled "Off-Street Parking: Meeting Board Commissioners 220th." Okay. My name is Fay Lewis. Property address is 2708 Plymouth Street in Kittle Hills. It's a paper street. It's actually the driveway. The driveway is on Hayman Boulevard. Approximately four or five years ago, the town constructed a bike walkway, a path along Bay Drive, and in doing this, parking spaces were removed. These were used to get to the pier and gazebo. When I brought this to attention, the commission, off-street parking spaces were constructed at the corner of Bay and Hayman, on two on one side and four on the other side, and that took care of the problem until now. Public are now parking on both sides of Hayman. They're using it as an overflow. And when these vehicles are parked, it makes it impossible for emergency vehicles to get through, not to mention other vehicles. It's a dangerous situation. I try to maintain my property, but with tire marks in my yard, it's not possible. Also, it's hard to get out of my driveway when their vehicles are protruding into my driveway. It's impossible to get me my boat out. The board is helping to pass, and I'm hoping for some restitution now. I'm sure that's the word you were looking for, but perhaps some, no parking signs would help. There's a grassy area between the path and the street, and maybe some off-street parking could be implemented. I'm open to suggestions. Thank you for your support, Fay Lewis and neighbors. Is there any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we will conclude public comment. The next item on the agenda is response to public comment. Commissioners, did you, how do we think you'd like to say about any of those public comments?
You know, I went out and looked at this Hayman area, and there are four parking spaces on the north side, and there's two on the south. Now, if people are parking outside of the parking spaces, it seems like, as you were reading this, that's what I was gathering.
Yeah, that's, it's ticketable.
But Hayman Street is a hundred foot right away.
Right.
And as long as the people are off of the paved area of Hayman, I don't, I just don't see where there could be a problem. The only, the only place that could be a problem is if somebody passed that fourth spot.
It sounds like there might be.
It might be a radius problem, depending on how big her boat is. She mentioned something about getting a boat in there. But I don't know if you put a parking spot there, you're not going to eliminate that.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure whether she was talking about putting the parking.
Yeah.
Maybe put a sign at the end saying, "Don't go past."
Well, her yard is actually further back. You know, she's, she, all she has is a drive, yeah, and her, her actual yard and house is further back. So I don't, I don't really quite get what she's talking about as far as people being in her yard. I don't know how that could happen. So I'm kind of not understanding the situation.
Well, I did not have a chance to get out there yet, but I certainly will to take a look. I could sort of vaguely recall the new spaces that had been by there, but I don't have two minutes of memory.
Now, I did call the fire chief today, and I called the police chief, and the police chief indicated they hadn't had any, you know, complaints. The fire chief indicated that they haven't had any comments from the fire department that emergency vehicles couldn't get through. There's plenty of room there.
Right, right, yeah.
I don't know where that's going to run either unless somebody double park. And if that's the case, then she needs to call the police and have them come out because they would be on the roadway, and, you know, they could take care of that.
Yeah.
But she couldn't quite understand what her.
Should we maybe have somebody just kind of reach out to Miss Lewis for a little more details?
Sure.
I can certainly give her a call.
We could, actually, the staff will be happy to take care of that.
That's not, that would be dating.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let us know what to find out.
Will do.
And I think, like you said, you probably have relationships since they, this has been something that you've probably talked with her about back in the day.
And it says, "and neighbors," so you wonder.
Who are the other people?
Don't touch base with her and see who we need to talk with.
I'm sure we can come up with a solution there.
Yeah, love to, love to help. I just couldn't quite understand what she was getting at.
Does the staff have any other input about West Hayman? That it's a long straightaway. Actually, it's property on that street, but I had not seen speeding when I was there, but.
Oh, you mean West Ocean Acres?
Oh, Ocean Acres, what did I say? Hayman, sorry. We're sure of the Ocean Acres, right.
Yeah, I would defer to Dana, who I'm sure could speak to that. We've had some speed monitors put up.
We've had speed monitors put up at times, but I know we have one that's not working, so we're trying to get at this. And I also do patrol and do stationary patrol. And when they're there, apparently, it's not happening. And then when we're not there, it's just timing. But we do work up there and try to get what we can and just slow them down.
Can I ask you, do you notice if, Aiden, do you notice? Because I take, I take after-school kids back to the access with the lot, and what I notice is there's a lot of high schoolers. Maybe not so much right now, but as soon as school gets out, I notice there's a lot of high schoolers. It's sort of me lined back towards the woods, and they do a lot of really fast driving, like on the gravel. So I'm wondering if maybe that's part of it, too. So I'm just wondering if you notice their age, like are they younger or older? You know that?
Just cars.
Yeah.
One too fast.
Yeah.
Well, we'll continue to monitor.
Yeah, just bringing it to our attention helps. We appreciate that. And so, you know, the, the chief is always keen to know what's going on in the town so we can keep a close eye out.
And they're always in that, I live sort of in that neighborhood, too, and you guys are always monitoring, especially when school was in and getting out, so.
And she can always call me directly if she needs to.
Yes, so always feel free to reach out. More communication is better.
And then on the, the other public comment about the shoulder work. Isn't that DOT?
Looks like a DOT sign.
It looks like a DOT sign.
We'll take care of it. We'll.
Yeah, I think, I think that's DOT that's doing that.
Assuming that they put it out, but it may have been something to do with the cop, you know.
I think it has to do with the construction. This is right in front of where the big houses are, and I think they're doing lots of, maybe some water or running some lines for the.
Yeah.
I was actually going to buy it today and then got the email like 10 minutes later. And I noticed it because, well, I noticed if you were a biker, you would almost, you would almost have to go around it, you know, a little bit, so. Anyway, but I think maybe that's what it has to do more of is, because it's, it is having bigger problems.
Yeah, that's, that looks like a DOT sign.
We'll address it.
Pretty appreciate it. Thanks for looking into it. Any other comments? Are there any committee reports? All right. Well, Commissioner's Agenda, I guess, kind of a short agenda there.
The only thing I had there is I wanted to thank Debbie for dealing with that issue today I called you about with the trash cans. Thank you very much for looking into that.
I do have a little more information on that, just in case this occurs again. They had, the trash cans that were on the beach at that location had been removed because of some storm damage, and they were getting knocked over or thrown out, and they just had not gotten put back out, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. But if they do have to be brought back in, that is why. And that's why they had doubled up on the access side. But they, they did get those back out today.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Excellent, excellent.
As far as I'm concerned, Mayor, I want to bring to the board's attention an idea. I think, you know, obviously, following what you did with the outdoor seating and what the county's done, you know, I think, I think it'd be a good idea to take a look at the tenting and the, and, you know, the temporary nature of those tents and the permitting of those tenting. Being that we're promoting the outdoor seating, or basically, that's how the restaurants have to kind of exist if they can, with their limited indoor seating and not knowing what's going to happen here. But, you know, I feel like maybe we should have a temporary, you know, an idea of a temporary suspension of some of these requirements on outdoor tenting, too, because of the heat, because of the businesses trying to encourage them to do outdoor or have the outdoor ability to, to seat folks or to shelter from the sun. So if it's possible that we could look into that temporarily, I think that would be, you know, helpful to the businesses, a couple businesses, you know, mention that to me. And, you know, they're running into some, some situations where they think that would be helpful. Of course, it has to be safe, and, you know, it can't be, it can't be something that blows away. It has to be commercial quality, you know, nothing, not a pop-up tent that you would get off, you know, get at Walmart, but something more commercial, you know, and something sturdier. Maybe there should be some exceptions made to that, so that's my opinion on that, so. There are a couple, you know, a couple restaurants that mentioned that. I know there's some different restaurants doing some different things already, and then, you know.
Is it permitting fee or the process that it's?
It's the, I think, the one, well, one place is more like the allowance of it, how it's set up, maybe, and the other, the other place is, it's more, oh, I don't know if there's been a suspension of anything in light of, in light of this for the restaurants, to my knowledge, or hasn't been. Or there hasn't been a, that wasn't part of the executive order or anything like that, but the E-PAS. But the, you know, the idea of that. And then there might be some questions on outdoor lighting and things like that as well that, that are, need to be answered, that aren't compliance with the ordinances or, or, you know, and the tenting requirements, that you have to get a permit. I just don't know, you know, if other, you know, it seems like other businesses are doing, each business is doing something different if they have the ability to do outdoor, so.
I think Meredith.
You think Meredith can probably set some light on.
Oh, okay. We, I thought you walked, and so you walked up there.
A process, and we tried to craft one that was as, as smooth and easy as possible, but just to have some record of whatever was doing. But you might be able to give us an update on what's come since the last update. I know about 10 people took advantage the first week, but that was a month or so ago.
Yeah, and we've had, we've had a few more, we've had some that did the outdoor dining and now are asking for tents. We haven't denied any tents unless they are not on their property or don't meet the fire code. There's a, there's, there's an issue sometimes with the fire code. It has to be a certain distance from the property line for fire code purposes. We're going into that today. We're working through it. I think they're going to be able to move it to the other side of their building without any issue. So that, that worked out fine. Most of the tents that have gone up, they, they show us where they're going to put it as long as it's on their property. It's not ever the percentage of parking that you allow. And it's got their, it's approved by the fire department for the fire prevention, whatever. They, there's a certificate that they have to do that we send to John Rizaldi, and he approves that. And then everybody goes out and looks at it once it's up. And we haven't had any issues that I'm aware of with anyone that has asked for a tent permit unless it wasn't going to be on their property or it didn't meet fire code because it's proximity to the building or proximity to the property line.
Is that a special allowance for this under this situation, under what we're dealing with, or is that?
So, so that typically our zoning ordinance doesn't allow tents, period. This is part of our outdoor dining concession that the board put in place that I don't know that tents were.
It wasn't written in there, yeah.
We interpreted it that you wanted to allow outdoor dining and that, that the comfort of the outdoor dining wasn't part of the outdoor dining experience. We've also allowed them to put lights in their tents for outdoor dining experience because you were allowing outdoor dining. You can't eat in the dark. So we've maybe made some interpretations in your, your order that this is the direction you wanted to go in with outdoor dining. The only thing that we can't interpret is the fire code.
Right, right, right.
And that is what it is. And John's been working with everybody he's, he's come in contact with. And like I said, we had an issue just today with one. I've spoken with the owner and the tent company. We're working through it. They were giving John a call, making sure we had everything straight to, because for zoning purposes, it was actually okay, but then fire code, it had, it had a hiccup, so. But hopefully, hopefully, we, we work through those before it actually goes up. But I, I don't know that any that we've denied that have been in process.
Maybe that, that idea that that interpretation's allowable is not fully out there. Is that possible? Yeah, because maybe if the businesses don't talk, they may just go, oh, well, reading this strictly, that's not allowable. Okay, so that's good to know. I mean, I'm not sure everybody knows that interpretation is, is allowable because it's not in writing.
Maybe we could do a little FAQ or something, put it on the website, or maybe a quick email.
They have to be, they have to be anchored. They have to be removable in the event of an emergency situation, i.e. a storm's coming in a short amount of time. That's all part of building code and the fire code, depending on the size. If it's a small tent and it doesn't fall under either one of those, we're just looking at it for zoning. Most businesses have chosen the picnic table umbrella route because it's much easier to deal with and less expensive. But I think we have three or four that have done tents. It all started when Roosters was doing their free meals with the tent.
And then, and that permit is a special permit, does it, does it, is it temporary in nature?
So the, we send them a letter of making approval for their outdoor dining area in accordance with the emergency order that was issued. Emergency order's attached to that letter. It's not actually a permit. It's an emergency, it's, it's approval for their outdoor dining area with emergency letter with the caveat that at such time, the governor allows restaurants to be open at 100%. This will expire.
Oh, okay. That's good to know, too. Okay. Yeah, those are just interpretations that I don't think they're out there necessarily, and you get questions, you know.
They, they call, they call us all the time.
Yeah, they call you, and now they're calling me sometimes, so.
And if you want to send them in our direction, we'll be upstream, get them, get them moving in the right direction.
Okay.
Right, and I know there's a lot of reporters that listen to this meeting, and if you wanted to call anybody, the staff, to ask more questions and cover it in the news, people would be interested in that information, I think, you know, to make it easier for the rest of the restaurants that might have been leery to ask. We would like to encourage them so they can be as successful as they can for the rest of the summer. And it's healthy and safe.
We understood that was the board's intent.
Yeah, that's the intent.
And most, most have utilized the picnic umbrella. But I think Carvel Grill has quite, quite a big tent in their side area, and it meets all the requirements of the order and the percentage of parking and everything, so.
Looks like it could handle a hurricane, but that's a big, that's a tough looking tent.
It still has to come down if we have.
It may be, it's, that's right. And it needs them. They're going to get larger if it gets hotter.
Yeah, you definitely need shade out there.
Shelter from the sun, so. Had a few hot ones lately. It's probably, yeah, it's probably going to be an increase still in the requests.
We definitely want to make sure that all of our 50-plus restaurants know that we're here for them, and we're trying to be as accommodating as possible. It's challenging times. Yep.
That's great. Thank you.
Did you have anything, Abby?
I did, oh, I did have a question that, or I just, I guess, wanted to clarify. The Outer Banks Visitors Bureau has masks. I'm not sure if I mentioned it the last time that we discussed it, but they've ordered masks and they're at the visitor centers. So there was some question somewhere I saw about why they weren't providing masks. They, they are. They're at the visitor centers, and they have, I believe, more on order. And then we have some order, too. And I, I didn't know the intent of those was, was going to be businesses. Was that, or, or whoever.
Yes, right.
Is there a timeline for that? Do we know?
Most of the things right now, we're waiting on the vendors, and they're just so overwhelmed.
Yeah, it's a tough time to order certain things, for sure. It's not one thing, it's five other things, right? All right, well, I know it's in the works, and it's, it's a, applaud all the work that all the folks that are involved in those groups that put together the, all of the signs and the masks and the clings for the windows are all be hitting the streets here as soon as is practical.
We get them, yes, and Bobbin ordered, yes.
As far as, yeah, I've talked to a lot of people. They want to make signs, and all, all the sign-making materials are backordered, and you can't even get basic stuff sometimes. All right, the next item is the.
Commissioner Windley?
Oh, sorry, Chris Whitley. I forgot about you over there.
Move my chair.
Move the chair down while I already got. I'm going to leave out there another umbrella.
Put you under a Timmer.
A couple of quick questions, following up on a few other things. I know the extension of phase two of, I guess, the state reopening from COVID probably affects this, but have there been any updates at all on us being able to schedule our retreat? I would imagine with where we are now, probably not, but has there been any, any news of that at all? Availability, maybe a facilitator, any of those things?
I apologize if I was giving directions to do that. I didn't.
I'm just curious if we haven't, okay, okay.
If you, you know, if the board wants to set a date, I'll be more than happy to.
Interestingly, I was talking with Mr. Gray about that earlier, that we would like to get that back on track whenever it's practical. You know, hopefully, we could find a way. I know, I think we're all pretty busy in the summer, but maybe in September, we could look at some time where we could find some space that had room for us to spread out, maybe even outside, so we can do it without these fun things. So we can spread out enough to talk in, in a small group. Because, yeah, it is something that we really were trying to do right before all this happened, and it'd be great to get it back on track. And then I don't know, like you said, we, we had made some arrangements with a facilitator, but I haven't checked in with them lately either, so.
And I'll be, I'll be happy to check in to see if they could give us some dates if you're looking around September, October.
Right, because I imagine there's sort of a backlog building up of all sorts of things that they would normally do.
I honestly, I don't know how many, I don't, so much is done Zoom.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much actual traveling.
Yeah, they didn't, weren't allowed to travel.
Well, they are at this point.
They are, okay.
But I don't, I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay, good, good.
As we get, as we get on into the fall.
All right, for, for next meeting, we'll look at dates on the calendar, and we'll see, give a couple of options.
And in the meantime, we'll, we'll make some contacts with the lady that we were speaking with earlier from back in March.
Sounds good, then we can line up their calendar and our calendars. All right, super. I'm glad to get that back on track. I know Charity is, too.
One more quick question. Gosh, probably six or seven months ago, we had briefly discussed about inviting someone from the Department of Transportation in, maybe give a presentation on, you know, what's happening in Dare County, future large-scale projects, and really some of the things that could affect Kittle Hills. COVID's happened, and really delayed those plans and the building, schedules like that, but.
Actually, actually, he was scheduled, but it was, that was one of our meetings that were postponed. And I'll be, I'll be happy to touch base with Jerry Jennings on that. I'm not sure what the travel policy is for DOT right now. I know they're dealing with some budget issues. And pretty much my understanding on projects for DOT is anything that's, anything that's under contract is being completed. I'm not sure how that's going to change for the new fiscal year, but I'll, I'll touch base with Mr. Jennings.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Super. Next item is the mayor's agenda, and I probably covered most of the things I was going to say already, which was about the masks and the signs and the, and all the things, the clings and that sort of thing. I'm glad to see that moving forward. I was trying to remember whether or not you needed me to do something regarding the resolution about Title, Title VI, or is that part of the consent agenda? Okay, well, I'm sure you will cover it, and it's, as a matter of fact, you're up now.
I, I don't have anything for the manager's agenda, but I do have the consent agenda.
Okay, please do.
Nothing for me.
Okay, consent agenda. Minutes from the June 8th and June 10th 2020 meeting, the May 2020 monthly report for budget amendments. The first one is to appropriate insurance proceeds to cover insurance claims reimbursable expenses during the year. Second one is for the PEG channel support funds. Next is to appropriate COVID relief funds under the Federal Pairs Act through Dare County to cover COVID-19-related expenses. And then lastly, to appropriate funds for beach and sand fencing available from Dare County. Number four is policy adoptions for compliance with state and federal requirements. The A, the first one, is a resolution adopting the policy to prohibit discrimination in programs and services and activities receiving federal financial assistance and nondiscriminal, nondiscriminational policy statements. And then B is the article to amend, the amendment to Article 4, Recruitment and Employment, Section 1, Equal Employment Opportunity Policy, KDH Personnel Policy to Update Nondiscriminatory Language. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented and motion would be in order. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented and motion would be in order.
So move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion this second. Is there any discussion? Let's just say it's always interesting when the Supreme Court thinks that the Supreme Court of the United States reaches right down into our policy, and we're able to do good things like that regarding Title Six and the other adjustments to our policies. Is there another discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And aye as well, so we have a unanimous consent, only consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our second public comment of the evening. Give the public a couple of chances to come up and say some things. We don't think, we have anybody signed up for the second, but is anybody in the audience interested in speaking? All right. Hearing none, we'll, we'll close the second public comment. And unless there's anything on anyone's mind, we are looking for a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion. Thank you, John.
Second.
My second from Ms. Ivy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.